Okay, ready to go. Everybody on and ready?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Our monthly meeting, first of the year, first of the month. We started our meeting, well, we didn't actually start our meeting. We had a closed session for attorney client client privilege, seeking advice of counsel. And we are just finished with our attorney and starting the agenda for this tonight's meeting. So, Michael, if we could have a roll call.
Mayor Morandi.
Here.
Trustee Early.
Here.
Trustee Bender.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. We'll get going in our meeting. A number of things to go over. So, first up was the financial update. Is a.
I don't see her on.
Michelle, Michelle won't be able to make it.
Okay.
Do we have anyone with an update? I don't, I don't have.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jeff.
I was gonna say, I talked to Michelle earlier. She sent out the letters with unpaid taxes. There were 15 parcels in the village, which is about par for years past. She's working on the W2s, all the year-end tax reporting stuff and the ACA, which is due February 1st. Revenue, there's been no significant changes since her report last month. And then the next big thing is the budget. She provided a timeline. We worked backwards from the state's mandates. So, we start from when everything's due and kind of work backwards from there. So, the first week of February, she'll be sending out the worksheets, having the discussions. I guess one thing to decide is which trustees are going to meet with her and department heads for each of the departments. So, at some point over the next month, you need to decide that and just let her know, and then we'll schedule.
I, I think we can do that now. I reviewed with her who did what last, last year. So, Highway was Dave last year. Water Sewer was Fran. Police was me. Shared Services, Jeff, you and Michelle did that together. Rec, you did Dave. Dave, you did Rec. And Court Tab and HGRB weren't necessary last year. So, Dave, do you want to keep those same assignments?
I'm fine. Do we need the final one? For.
Court TAB, HGRB. Why don't we leave that up to one of the new trustees?
Yeah, we didn't need it last year, meaning.
The court, the court budget is pretty standard on the TA, the tree advisory board. Typically, it's the grant money. That, that changes that. And the HGRB, again, it's grant money.
What was that last? I'm sorry, HGRB what?
Grant money. That's what normally changes those two.
Isn't there a request by both of those departments every year, though?
Well, that's what we'll find out.
Right.
Well, the HGRB has gotten it sort of down to a form that they worked through pretty quickly. I need to just pass off my files to the, to Sean and Al, so they have the budget files from the past. It's not complicated. So, I'm happy to work with them if they need it.
So, Dave, do you want to sign Kathleen to that?
Sure enough, sounds good.
So, just HGRB?
The court, tree advisory and HGRB. As Michelle said, court is pretty, pretty unchanging year to year. The tree advisory board is pretty standard unless they have a grant.
So, why don't we let Heidi have one of those so that she has, gains that experience as well?
Heidi, which do you want to take?
If she wants it.
I like.
I like either one. Any of those is fine with me.
Why don't you take TAB? I think you can talk to Jen and that'd be a good.
First starter. Great, thank you. It would be helpful, I think, since trustees with, with more experience are, if it's appropriate, I would love to observe one of the actual department conversations that you have to learn how that process works with a department with a larger budget, to understand the role that you're playing as a trustee. So, if someone is willing to let me sit in with you, I would love to be able to, to watch and learn.
Me? I'm glad with you joining Matt and I, if that's okay with Matt.
Water.
Water.
Water and sewer.
Okay, I'd also like to shadow you, if that's okay.
You can't do water and sewer. Because that gives us a quorum.
Something else, got to do with Dave or something.
Sure, I will arrange it.
You can do Highway with me, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Who does police?
Me.
Okay, I think we can move on then from, from the first, from the financial update. Report from the police department, Larry is with us.
For the month of the end of last year, December, we had a calls, 46 calls totaling. Total number year-to-date from January 1st to 31st was 665. We also had one arrest last month for a vehicle, a traffic law of suspended insurance and suspended registration. We had, for a total number of one, we had for the total, for the year was 10 arrests for last year, for 2020. And for the parking and moving violations, we had 38 moving violations and 54 parking violations. Tickets that were handed out was a total of 92 for the month of December. And for the year, it was 1,116. And that's what I have for the December monthly report.
Is that a, is that a larger number than usual for the, for the month?
For the month, yes. We also, we had one of the, we had the big snowstorm. So, I believe in the night, I think we had like 17 or 20 park and summoners written for people that didn't get off the streets.
What is the difference between aided case and officer needs assistance?
Officer needs assistance or other agencies. So, when we get, we got called at least three times that I can recall in December to rescue somebody out of an elevator down at the MTA train station. It's also for calls. If there's an emergency call in like, say Nelsonville, or as far as 9D and 301, if it's like a midnight shift, or it's a 4:00 to 12, and there's only one Putnam County sheriff on, and there's say a burglary alarm that goes off. We do not like having officers go to burglary alarms by themselves. My officers on occasion will back them up, especially on a midnight shift, because there's only one sheriff on their side of the county. And they do the same for us. So, if we have a constant alarm that goes off for the pavilion over, the pavilion, the medical building, it's a constant that goes off, open door and the burglar alarm will go off. One of their officers, if he's in the area, will come over and they will both go through the building together for safety purposes. So, that's when officer needs assistance comes in. The 80 cases or any cases that were called to like a ambulance call, any, any, any 80 come through, we have to get, we usually respond there with the ambulance, with P-VAC, or sometimes we're there first. That could be, go ahead. That's a medical call.
I was gonna ask if the medical building door is something that New York Presbyterian knows about and is addressing.
Oh, I have had conversations with them since that building opened, believe me. They had an issue with the cleaning crew constantly leaving the door ajar. So, my officers would go on at midnight and check the doors, make sure they're all locked, and they would want to pop in the door. So, I mean, we had probably last year alone, at least 10 to 12 of those. So, I'm in contact with their head of security all the time.
Okay, anything else for Larry for now?
Nope.
Larry, do you want us to give you a buzz later when we're on with the police thing? If you don't want to hang out, we could give you a call when we get to that, if you don't want to hang out.
Yeah, if you want to shoot me a quick text, that's fine.
Okay, that way you you don't have to hang out.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Next, we have monthly reports, recreation. I don't think we have anything for recreation, correct?
They didn't submit anything.
Okay, so, I guess first one we have, I think from planning, we have zoning. Is Eric on by any chance? We'll have to invite Eric to come. I don't know if he actually, you know, knows he's welcome, but it'd be good for the board to get a face for that. So, maybe I'll ask Eric if he'd join us next time, if he has the time. So, I'll read it. Meeting December 3rd, board opened a public hearing on Zoom for a six-foot fence at 33 Market Street, District 1, or B1 district. The applicants were represented by their attorney and architect. The applicants questioned whether the code enforcement officer was correct to refer their permit application to the ZBA for a variance. They contend that the code places no height limit on fences in the B1 district. They asked the ZBA to interpret the relevant sections. If the ZBA interpretation supports the CEO's referral, the applicants asked for a variance allowing the fence. After all comments were heard, the board adjourned the hearing without taking any action because the Putnam County Planning Department had not yet responded to the village's referral of this matter. The matter made, the matter had to be referred to the planning department under section 1239- M of state law, because the property is located within 500 feet of a village boundary. The hearing will be continued at the next meeting. And meeting on December 17th, the county planning department responded on December 15th that a fence project at 33 Market Street is not subject to 239 referral. At the applicant's request, the public hearing on the matter was adjourned again for continuation at the next meeting. The board did not discuss the application. No other business, excuse me, was undertaken except for reviewing minutes. This was the first meeting attended by Heath Salit. We'll play it for NASA, right? A new board member, one seat on the board remains vacant. Next, we have historic district review.
Sean is here.
Hello.
Hello, Sean.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, we, I will just read our report. In December, we met twice in workshop with the owner of 212 Main Street to discuss alterations to her front and rear porches, as well as modifications to an existing garage. The garage portion requires approval by the ZBA, or a variance rather, so that portion of the application will be tabled until they have a chance to review. And I don't know when she will be on their calendar, since the last time we spoke to her. We also met with representatives of 2931 Rock Street, sorry, there's a typo in our report. 2931 Rock Street regarding their driveway project during both our initial, initial meeting and during a scheduled public hearing. Numerous members of the community attended to express concerns and opposition to the project. On the recommendation of the village attorney, the public comment period for the application remains open until January 13th, which is our regular January meeting tomorrow. On January 4th, our board conducted a site visit to observe the existing conditions and further understand the impact of the proposed work. In January, we will conclude the public hearing for 2931 Rock Street. We will also continue our review of the replacement windows and storm windows at 4 Morris Avenue. And we have a workshop with the owners of 8 Stone Street about the reconstruction and expansion of their front porch. As far as boardwork and projects goes, first, we are very pleased to welcome Todd Seacverture of Chestnut Street to fill the remainder of trustee Foley's term on the HGRB. Todd grew up in Garrison and brings years of experience, both as a tradesperson and a preservation advocate to our board. And we thank the trustees for appointing Todd. Our board was scheduled to meet on the 6th to provide feedback for the most recent design draft supplied by our graphic designer, Kirsten, but due to the, at the time, ongoing siege of the Capitol that day, the chair called off that session and all comments were relayed by email. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
See you next month.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's see, next up, we have the fire company.
Dave, I think you missed the town of Phillips Town.
Did I?
That's okay, you can skip over me.
I'm just kind of scrolling down, so I didn't see you, so sorry.
No problem whatsoever. Very short report. We had a pretty active December, but really not much to report on. As you know, the town hall renovations have been going on. They are picking up. We foresee possibly moving in late February, early March, but that's still to be determined. Again, the work that they're doing on the side looks really nice. The work inside comes, comes out very nice as well. We're working on two new contracts, both ambulance corps, Garrison and Phillips Town. We should have those in place by the middle of the month. We were kind of like operating without a real good contract. So, our attorney brought this to our attention and we were in the process of getting the contracts in between, which should be just formally, basically. And we just want to make sure that we're capturing everything we're supposed to be and everyone's doing what they're supposed to on both sides, meaning us and the people in the Phillips Town and Garrison Ambulance Corps. Dave's where it is. We're working with Putnam County to have a COVID vaccine center here in Phillips Town. There was a meeting today at the rec center. I really don't know the outcome of that meeting at the particular time. Maybe Dave's a little bit more on it than I do. But I know Dave was at the meeting with Richard and a bunch of people from Putnam County. You know, we're lobbying to get a place over here on West, on the west side of the county. As you know, we're always seem to be the last people to always get anything from the county. So, we're seeing what we could do to get some type of activity over here for a vaccine, which is, which we definitely deserve. I don't know if Dave can elaborate on it anymore, if he knows more than I do, but I'm not sure. The Garrison Golf Club, we first, we had their first meeting with the planning board, as everyone's well aware of. We're transferring all this, this property over to the Shakespeare Festival. We're expected to probably take at least nine to 11 months to go through the whole entire process. This is probably one of the biggest projects that the planning boards had in many, many years. We had the meeting with them first. It was very, it was very informative. We got a big stack of maps, papers and everything else to go through. But all in all, I think this is going to be a really, really nice project for the whole Phillips Town. But, you know, it's, it's very generous of them turning this over to us. And we look forward to working with them. And the plan is to have that tent up, not next season, but the following season, and have Shakespeare down there in 2022. I think everyone's in line to get that happen. I think it will happen. Also, Roberto Muller and Max Garfinkel brought us through the 2020 Phillips Town National Resource Inventory. I encourage everyone to look at that. It's very, very nice maps that they have out there, very informative. And I had the link is www.climmsmartphillipstown.org. So, I, I would suggest everyone take a look at that. And it's a lot of good information out there, and they did a beautiful job on the map. And go out and look at this there as well. A planning, zoning and conservation board still meet via Zoom. Us ourselves, our Phillips Town Town Board, we had a Zoom meeting last week as well. We decided it was the best thing to do. Not, we were meeting in person for the last several months, but we thought at this particular time, we'd best to go back to Zoom, which we did. Again, we're still looking for anyone who's interested in joining the cemetery committee. End of my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, I'll elaborate a little more later on the, on the whole, the whole, the meeting today.
Fine.
I'll take on everything. But basically, and a bottom line is they're definitely going to have it in the rec center. They have 300 doses, I believe, and everything's continually changing. So, Kathy Percicello, who's supervising public health nurse, was there trying to coordinate. There were several people there, some of whom I didn't know. The deputy county executive was there, and Richard, of course. So, we went over everything and Kathy was, you know, they're basically setting up or feeling out the area and the space and seeing how they're going to, you know, start giving the flu vaccine. So, 300 are coming. They don't know who, right now, they're not sure if they, what age groups or whatever are taking it, even though the governor has said, you know, it's 65 now.
65 eligible now.
With only 300, they, they might change that, and it might go to seniors, and then the seniors might be contacted by senior department in Putnam County, from what I understand. So, it's kind of a crazy mess, kind of, right now. But it's definitely going to start happening at the rec center. That's a definite, unless they chase their mind tomorrow.
Well, like I said, I did read Richard's email, but I didn't really want to divulge too much. But anyway, it's a positive thing, because, you know, we didn't, you know, we asked for this month, a couple of weeks ago, and we did, they kind of like just blew us off. And now they're finally taking it seriously, and at least they had the meeting today. So, everything is a step in the right direction, at least.
Good things while you're both here. I worry about seniors actually being able to, it's a pain in the neck, the eligibility webs, the website for eligibility and getting an appointment. And I hope that the senior services are maybe helping folks navigate that. And that's a question for tomorrow, when we have the county tick to call with towns and villages. And the other thing, just to put in, in minds as we go forward, I know right now we're dealing with really limited availability of vaccines, but I hope as we, it does become more available, that we can advocate with the health department to try to establish a location in one of the villages, either Nelsonville or Cold Springs, so that we have a location people can walk to. You know, we, we are the dense population center for the county, and it seems to make sense to make it as easy as possible. And.
Yeah, I recommend that the senior citizen center where they do.
I mean, we've got St. Mary's, we've got, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how usable the firehouse is, but there are a number of spaces that if we're, if we're having people come on foot and we're not dealing with worrying about cars as much, it would be great to make that option available. I know that's, I know it's far ahead at this point, but just planning it in folks' minds as we go forward.
Yeah, no, we definitely, we thought of that as well, having something in the village. It would be great. But I think at this point, we got luck, we, we can, we'll take whatever we can get.
We have 300 doses to deal with, yeah.
Not that it's a lot, but it's a start.
It's something.
Well, there's a lot of people I know that got it already. Went to Newburgh, went to Beacon, people going to Middletown. You know, they're getting on these web pages and they find a location, they'll drive, where, you know, they want to go out, wherever they want, people are going. Unfortunately, we don't, you know, that's not, it's not good for personally, you know, older people in our community, but
Right.
if that's what people choose to do, then that's up to them.
Okay, we'll elaborate a little bit more, but thank you guys and Richard for definitely advocating and and legislator Montgomery. And I know they're also advocating for places, as Kathleen said, like the seniors center, and Kathy even mentioned that today, but I don't think that went anywhere. So, maybe as the number of, of vaccines are available, we will expand and we'll keep, try to put pressure, whatever we have and whatever we have.
Well, only that too, Dave, I guess I know, is people to administrator, to administrative vaccine and also do the administration piece before you get the shot. So, it's, you know, not just the vaccine itself, there's, as you know, other pieces to it.
Yeah, Kathy, you know, we, I asked Kathy about that and how you would volunteer or whatever, and there's a way you go onto one of the sites.
Yeah.
But right now, she feels confident that they have enough staff to, to do. She said they could do 648 people.
Right, that's what I, that's what I was told too. That's good.
Okay, well, thank you. And the, I'm just looking through the fences, the work in the town hall looks, looks nice, the, especially around the windows. So, I can't wait to see.
The trim looks beautiful.
Yeah, it's just, like I said, it is coming out nice.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure you'll be.
A little bit longer than we want it to be, but what are you going to do?
I'm sure you'll be happy when it's done, and I'm sure everyone will be pleased with the, the new space. It'll be great.
It will.
All right, take care. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, unless I've missed someone else, we're at the, the fire company now.
Sure. Tom Marigan, Chief Tom Marigan prepared the report. So, I'm just sharing it with you and with the public. On, on vaccines, a lot of our first responders were able to, they were able to get links and go to Westchester last week when the 1A groups were open in Westchester. And so, a lot of our, that those who wanted the vaccine from the fire company have gone. I know Larry, Larry and some of his guys went down to Westchester as well. So, it looks like our very local first responders have been, have been served. Okay, so, the total number of alarms for 2020, this is the report for December. There were 170 alarms through the year. 10 of them were in December. There's a little bit of illumination on the elevator repair that Larry mentioned earlier. So, Metro North, when it upgraded its elevator, it shifted from a hydraulic elevator to an electric elevator. And when there are storm surges or power outages, there is the possibility that the elevator will go down. And it has gone down with people in it, which is what Larry was referring to, that the power had to be restored and people had to be let out of the elevator. And the firehouse, they, they said that overall, the shift to the newer elevator has reduced the number of calls they get about the elevator, but there is the issue of the potential for it going down during storms. Chief Marigan did report that in the last storm, they opted, since they did not know how quickly they'd be able to get to people, they opted to shut down the elevator until roadways were clear and they were less, you know, not being pulled to other, other sites as frequently. Obviously, that has an impact on accessibility, but they hope that that's a rare occasion that they opt to do that. There was one mountain rescue in December, so the numbers of people going up the mountain continue. Four activated fire alarms, one gas leak, one EMS assist, one trash can fire and one flooding condition. So, the keypad on the front door was changed and we sort of ended, ended up needing to follow up with Central Hudson to make sure they could get access to the meters, but I spent some, a good chunk of time on hold and got them all set up. There was no heat in the truck room in, on one of the days that the guys were in. It turned out it was the blower, Pedala came and repaired the blower, but they do ask that as we move into budget season, we sort of think about bumping the the heating system up a little higher on the list. The, the side door on Church Street, the door is, is there. It's been sitting and waiting to be installed. Travis Fife, who is one of the newer members of the company, has some carpentry experience. He's going to give it a shot first. He's worked with this type of door and other locations. So, he's going to try it first to see if he can do it, and if he can't, he'll get back to us with a contractor estimate. And that's it.
Thank you.
Take the elevator at your own risk, I guess is the answer.
Right. Exactly. I think there's a late, late entry of, from the TAB. Does someone want to read that? Do we have that? I don't have it on mic.
I haven't, can read it.
Sure, thank you.
A report to the village board, 112, 2021. Happy New Year. Welcome to our new trustees, which is me. We have only a few items to report this month. The TAB held its monthly public meeting on December 16th, at which we took stock of the New York State DEC Urban Forestry Grants Project successes and improvements, among other business. With the help of the groundwork laid by the grant project, we are looking forward to turning back to our regular work. The chairperson gave a grant rap report to you, the village board of trustees at your December 15th board meeting. We are proud of the achievements of the grant project, and again, thank the board, as well as Mr. Downey and his team, Michelle and Jeff, and numerous citizen volunteers, including trustee Foley and Gordon and Suzanne Robertson for kind collaboration and the project's success. Michelle is working on submitting final vouchers to the state this month, and then the project will be officially closed out. Other business, we collaborated at the end of December with Mr. Downey to respond to a resident complaint of declining health and possibly dangerous limbs on a village tree adjacent to 69 Chestnut Street. The holiday tree in the tree pit in front of Village Hall will be removed this month. We hope to replace it with a live tree as soon as the underground stump allows, and we'll test that this coming spring, respectfully, Jennifer's work.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce, do we have anything?
The chamber, if there's nobody here, the chamber did send around.
Elizabeth, Eliza did. Elijah's on the phone.
Oh, is she? Sorry.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi.
Hi, Elijah. How are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thanks for having us. We just have a couple of points to report. We had our chamber election in Jan, in December, and Chadwick was added as a member-at-large. Sue Costigan will take the role as treasurer. Teresa Lagerbin was elected as our marketing and branding chair, and Jeff Michaelson will take our advocacy chair. So, you'll be hearing a lot more from him. And we also extend our congratulations to the new board members and our gratitude for you guys stepping up and taking on this role that is so important to our village. And then we just have an announcement for a couple of other things. We are sending out a survey this month that is asking the community to share what they feel the chamber goals should focus on. We kind of aim our goals around the Phillips Town Comprehensive planning, plan that was submitted this past year or month. But we want feedback from me just to help guide us on what we should focus on. So, look for that. That's going to be coming out in the next week. So look for that, that's going to be coming out in the next week in our newsletter and through our social media outlets. And last, this month on January twenty-first, we'll be having our virtual breakfast meeting to meet the elected officials, which we do every January. And I, I hope that all of our elected officials and trustees have already been invited, but if you have not, you are officially invited to join us. And it's just a nice way to start the year, introduce the committee and remind everybody about what you do for us and sort of discuss the goals of the year. So we hope you'll join us, and if you can't, we are just grateful to the work that you do. So that's the report for today, thank you.
Elijah, thank you for sending the grant, grant links that you sent. That's, when you find stuff like that, it's, it's helpful, I'm going to attend the, the water grant seminar and see what's around for money.
That's our pleasure, and, and we occasionally get information like that from different outlets, and we try and share with whoever it's relevant to, so if it's helpful, great, then it's not, worry about it.
Okay, thank you. Water Department, I think Matt's here, right, Jeff?
No, he is here.
Oh, he is here.
Oh, he was here.
He was here a minute ago.
Oh, where was he at? He was here. I guess not, no.
No, okay.
Gave up on us.
I, I'll give it a whirl, the Water Department's monthly report. I'm going to skip over reservoirs at ninety-eight point three seven percent. Reservoir status is ninety-seven point two-one twenty-twenty. I'll just, there was a correction, October, November reported usages. Matt goes over the numbers and why, I'm not going to get into how many gallons and all of that, but he did make those corrections. It was a higher use than usual, but not what he had first reported. Bacteria lab tests, all routine bacteriological monthly samples were found in good standing. New connection, the Phillips Town Hall had a new four-inch service line tapped on December second, now connected with Cedar Street to abandon original tap from Main Street. Free water service line leaks repaired, one on Orchard, one on Morris Avenue, one on Parson Tree over the course of December. Catskill D E P project had a conference call with Andy Vaccaro on DEP on Thursday at ten AM. I was in attendance on that one, in which it looked as if there was a glimmer of hope we would be able to proceed with the new connection to the aqueduct. But by one o'clock the same day and a follow-up phone call, we were informed that we will, we will be losing the existing connection as the village continues to wait approval. So this was a bizarre New York City D E P phone call for the, for the new new trustees, we've been trying to get this connection for, as an emergency connection with New York City's aqueduct system for thirteen years or so. They keep moving the goalposts and they continue. So we did, we got a call from them, they reached out to us and they had a plan to, a plan needed for what the work they were doing, and in so doing, also kind of followed up that we would be receiving what we needed. And that took place at ten o'clock, and as Matt says, at one o'clock, they called back and scrapped that plan and are going to something else, so.
Wait, the village continues to wait for approval, what, whose approval are they, does that mean?
We need, we need the approval for, we need the approval for design and to tap actually into the New York City aqueduct system.
So from another, another segment of the D E P?
Well, Anthony Vaccaro kind of represents him as the representative for that, so, you know. He said that we had the approval for the design, and when we asked them at the end of the discussion where he was telling us what he needed from us. And then we brought up, Matt and I brought up, well, where does that leave us? He said that, well, the design's been approved, and I think we're all in good shape here. And I said, ask if we could, you know, we've been doing this for quite a while, can we have something more definite than that? Can we have something in writing or whatever? And he said that shouldn't be a problem. And then at one o'clock, whatever plans they had that they needed us for, they decided to do something different. So it left us back to square one, where we don't have approvals, or we don't know, we're in limbo.
And did the, I know that, that you all, in the previous iteration of the board, had sought assistance from a consulting attorney to get help, was he able to help with?
So that was going to be kind of part of my report, but I'll, I'll do that now.
Wait.
No, no, that's okay, it's, it fits in here. So I talked with, along with Bart Clark, our, the engineer who's been working on this, along with Matt. But Matt wasn't on this call, we, because we hired, I believe, at least a month ago or two months ago, we hired the attorney David Metzger Merzig. He was a new, he worked on the New Falls connection, which he said is almost exactly like ours and was successful in that one. So we hired him, but hadn't heard from him, so I reached out to Bart and we had a Zoom meeting last week to so we had a Zoom meeting last week and to discuss the, where he was and to go over our next steps, or, we never, we never heard back from him. Basically, we agreed to use him and haven't heard from him, so. So moving forward, what he suggested, we have to, one of the, sorry, I'm all over the place trying to think of how to present this without getting really deep in the weeds. But what we need or what the, what the D E C, damn it. What the D E C is asking for is that the, both Nelsonville and Phillips Town are connected to our water systems, form a district.
Right.
They're still asking for that?
They're still asking that, and, but also along with that, because we, you know, in talking with, with David, it was clear that forming a district isn't really the problem. What they've also asked for is that they have separate, basically what they're asking for is a separate water system for Nelsonville, which would be like just incredibly, it's just, you know, it's not realistic. So moving forward, you know, and we've told them that, but to no avail, we aren't, God, damn it.
One broken phone.
So, sorry. So moving forward, he suggested first I have to talk to both Richard and Mayor Bowman and, and to have them agree to create a district and then move forward with that, saying that we have that, we have agreement with the officials from the, the different municipalities, and then try to move forward using that and saying that having a separate water system for Nelsonville would be impossible, and hopefully pushing it through that way. And that he would be able to move it forward, you know, at that point, right now.
So saying that we have a district, is that, are there structural issues to that, or is he saying, say, you have, by fiat, you have a water district?
I don't, that's kind of almost it. Basically, what they're going to say is that they, they form a district, however that's formed, I think he said it costs like three or four thousand dollars to do that. And it basically says that they, they will allow or that they agree that Cold Spring will manage the metering and the water usage and bill them for it.
Don't we do that already?
Yes, we do.
So we have to pay to document what we already do?
I guess.
I believe you're setting up a legal entity.
That's, that's what I'm wondering, Marie.
It's a legal entity, it's a water district, and the numbers are very small. I think it's eight users in the town of Phillips Town, less than twenty, and maybe a couple of hundred in Nelsonville. The, the, it's the Phillips Town that's the smallest, it's really, really tiny. But I believe it's setting up a legal, two different legal entities.
But basically, I mean, the bottom line, it's what we have now.
It is what we have now.
Illegal, yeah.
Well, well, we, we don't have it now, what we have is.
We have is a second municipality served by the first, right?
Two, two separate municipalities served by the first.
And so is that something, does it seem as if, if we were to do this, we, they would finally let us move forward?
Seriously, Kathleen, in your dreams.
So the.
I mean, it just seems crazy.
So David said, once if we, once I reach out to them, and if we get that, or whether in writing or whatever, and he knows that, then he would approach, I guess he knows people, you know, in the D E P, that he would reach out to her and, and feel out that and see if that would satisfy them and then move on from there.
This is criminal, it's criminal, I mean, clean, clean drinking water is a right, it's absurd.
But, but now the reason why we're doing this is for the dams.
Right, right, to be able to repair our dams.
But, but with, well, it's not clear to me, anyway, that we need to do it for the dams.
Okay, that's a separate conversation that we should have, but the concept that, that a regulatory body for New York can tell two municipalities full of people that, that they can say no to drinking water is nuts.
But we had it, we had an agreement, there's been an agreement on the books with New York City for aqueduct water free.
Right.
For years and years and years.
It's this connection for the backup that's the challenge.
Yes.
Again, it seems criminal.
It is. So I'll follow up with that and hopefully maybe we'll, we'll get somewhere with that. It's just for, and the other thing is it's just for emergency, it's not, it's not for, you know, using. I mean, the rates are way higher than we would pay or anyone would pay or want to pay. You just need it, so if we were going to drain down, or if anything else had happened, if there was a huge drought, that we'd have somewhere to go.
Well, it's really important that we, I, I know you've been trying for years, it's really important that we move it forward. I mean, we've got aging infrastructure we need to deal with.
I, I think we've tried almost.
Oh, you've tried everything, I know.
And Bart, Bart the engineer and, and Greg, they were at it for such a long time. They would come up with a design for the new connection, you know, the mechanicals of it, and, and they would be approved, and then they would change that or say, oh, we need something else, and then they would do that, and that wasn't enough, so this has been going on. They're like their own little power structure. I don't know who we get to influence them or move things forward, but we haven't been able to find that, that person yet.
So, so you, so you are going to have Mr., is it Metzger or Merzick?
Merzig, yeah.
Merzig, he's going to make a next, we're pressing him to make a next contact?
Yeah, but the first thing we have to do is actually get the okay or kind of the approval, and I'll have to follow up with him if it needs to be in writing or not, from the other municipalities that they're willing to, you know, create their own district and have us, you know, be the.
Serve the district.
Yeah. And once that's done, then he would reach out, he didn't want to reach out without that kind of guarantee from the other municipalities.
So we, we need to get that rolling.
He will go to who he knows in the D E P or that he worked with from the work that he's done with New Falls and other municipalities to see what can be done, or if that'll satisfy them, and go from there.
Okay, let's do it.
Sorry, I can't describe that a little better.
It's very complicated.
Probably confuse you more than, than when we started. Next, we have a wastewater and wastewater department. So I, I, I'm just, I don't know, let's see, annual infiltration and intrusion reporting, annual I and I reports from the year two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty, recap report submitted on Tuesday, January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Second bullet point, Campbell Avenue Pump Station, Island Industries installed a new four-inch check valve and cleared obstruction from pump, no degradable rags, oh, non-degradable rags, and pump two has returned to service on Thursday, December third. And last bullet point, potable water leak on, what is that? W W T, what's, what's the W?
Way score, Way score treatment plant.
No, it's an F.
Treatment facility.
Ah, good for you, good points over here.
Sounds like.
Found that the water line, the airation sprayer line, has a leak on Sunday, December sixth. Line was isolated and drained back as sprayers are not in use currently, to be repaired in warmer weather.
I, I was hoping that Matt, well, I know we lost him, but one of the thoughts I had is that his, he seems to make reference to, you know, stuff being flushed that can't be cleared, and I wondered if we need to make a plea with residents and our aging pipes not to be flushing wipes, it sounds like he's having, it's like it becomes a real problem, that, that they don't break down as they should, and especially with old pipes, it's a problem.
Not, I'm not sure it's old pipes.
Well, that's what, yeah.
The flushable wipes are not biodegradable, and they, they.
Exactly. So encouraging people not to use them is what I was suggesting, if we can.
Maybe you can get a cute little cartoon wipe with a X through it and put it on our website.
Flush me.
Right, I think that'd be. All right, thank you. Building Department, a monthly report. Activity, new building permits, five, building permits issued, three. Dumpster permits issued, one, COs issued eight. Record searches completed, eight complaints received, seven inspections completed, nine. Referrals generated, H D R B three, Z B A two, planning zero. Application permit fees collected, month of December, two hundred dollars, and record search seventy-five dollars for a grand whopping total of two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Of note, fire inspections will begin, will be beginning in January two thousand twenty-one. Informational letters are being created and properties eligible for fire inspection are being identified. So I think that's a great step forward and wish her luck on that. And I, I think that'll be very informative, once she does a few, and how long it takes, and, you know, we'll have a better idea of what's involved in that. Is Bugsy on?
Yeah, he's on.
Bugsy, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Tapped away.
Bugsy, you're still on mute.
Okay.
There you go.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you and see you, everything.
Beautiful.
Nine yards.
Boy, you guys, you guys got a gift there, don't you?
Oh, we.
Okay, for the, for the month of December, we had sixty-three and a half tons of garbage. Recycling, we had twenty-eight and a half tons as well. Let's see, for the month of December, we cleaned the leaves from McConville Park with Jack Del Vecchio of the Rec Department. We finished the pavers on Main Street for the Tree Advisory Board grant. We removed three sections of sidewalk for the TAB grant. We cleaned up the mulch from the stumps removed by the Tree Advisory Board. We cleaned up the leaves in the street with the Vactor truck, then we disassembled it and stored it away for the winter. We received, assembled and distributed three benches that were gifted to us from O S I at Dockside Property. We mounted and serviced the plows for the trucks and installed the two-yard Salter in the two thousand sixteen. We had one snow event of twenty inches and two salting events for the month. We had Pedala Landscape and Materials on site Friday, December eighteenth, and had Pedala and Sons Escavation on site Saturday, December nineteenth, to help with the snow removal. Let's see, for the vehicles, we installed a new starter and a new belt system, ninety-seven F three fifty. And also three new batteries, eighty-eight International Salter. During the storm, had issues with the ninety-seven Case Backo, the ninety-seven Ford F three fifty, the eighty-eight International Salter and the two thousand sixteen Ford F three fifty. The Backo lost forward driving capabilities for an hour or so. The ninety-seven F three fifty lost power steering, which was the belt tensioner, and also had issues with the driver's side door staying closed. The eighty-eight International Salter's chain broke shortly after loading it with salt, so we had to shovel out five yards of salt by hand. Two thousand sixteen had electrical issues with the plow system.
Sounds like you had fun.
It was busy.
Bugsy, what do you do in a, in a storm event like that when you have mechanical issues? Where, how are you getting to people? Where, how are you getting to people for repairs? Or who who is doing the repair for you on an urgent basis like that?
During a storm, um, there's really no one to go to. We have the town. Um, but most of their guys are usually out working the storm. Um, every once in a while, we do have Kenny Trimble will come over and lend a hand. He's, uh, he's pretty handy mechanically. Um. Other. Try and limp it through.
Sorry, I didn't hear you over the doc, the dog. What did you save as a last part?
Um, basically, uh, we try and do what we can as well and just try and. Make do with what we have and try and get it to the end of the storm, just to try and get past.
It's impressive.
Just a couple of quick things. Uh, one, the, uh. The O S I, the, uh, the benches that they they donate three benches, which we haven't brought up before. I I went down there and and met with, uh. With Bugsy and Reed F. Sheen and to for to locate them. So they're they're down in Dockside, uh, Park right now. And we'll, uh, uh, it's hoping for, it was kind of a bitter day and, uh. There was no photo ops or anything after that. So we'll have to get a thank you letter and hopefully, uh, you know, some photos for that and. Thank O S I for the donation. They're a very nice, uh. Benches, they're they're set kind of together facing a little bit different directions and Bugsy and guys will, uh. Permanently set them, uh, once the weather breaks. Uh, so thank you guys for that, Bugs. The other thing we, um, we lost are are losing another one of your labors. So we're back to, uh, dealing with that again. Um, so if you want to meet on that or maybe we can go over, uh, the last round before we advertise. If you think that's worth it, or we can advertise again and then the extension. Extensiveness of that advertising we should discuss. So maybe I can touch base with you tomorrow.
Yeah, that sounds good. I'm not sure what you meant by go over the last round.
Um, the last time we we interviewed.
Uh, applications we got?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, maybe whoever was number two on that or whatever, we might consider a little closer now. I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll, uh, I'll hook up with you. We'll discuss like further on how to go forward and, uh, the whole shebang again.
Sounds good.
All right. And, uh, I'm not sure, Jeff, do you know where we're at with the, uh, with the purchases? Has Michelle's? Given an update?
Well, there's been a, there's a resolution tonight on the agenda to approve. Uh, accepting the bid and the financing so that tomorrow we'll get purchase orders out and start the process.
Okay. Okay, anything else for Bugs? Thank you.
Thanks, Bugs.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, we're, uh. We're at.
Justice Court.
Justice Court, uh. December's monthly reports, fines, forfeited bales and civil penalties, twenty nine hundred and eighty dollars, parking tickets, thirty four hundred and eighty five dollars. And mandatory state surcharge, eighteen hundred and forty nine dollars for a total of eight thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. It for that. If anyone, if the other trustees, I never read the, uh, the whole thing. I don't go into the bottom ones if for whatever reason, I guess they're there. If you need. Have any questions, just let me know. Um, not that I'll be able to answer them, but. There are the defendants and D W I's and everything else listed. Usually don't go into that, go over that. So, uh, next, um, next up, and as Jeff pointed out, is resolution, uh. Zero one dash twenty twenty one, authorizing purchase of a garbage truck, cab and chassis. Uh, the following resolution, um, I'll make it, I'll make a, uh, a motion to authorize a purchase.
Second.
Um, whereas the Village of Cold Spring, uh, the village needs to purchase a new garbage truck, cab and chassis. And whereas the village solicited bids, uh, independently and to the New York State Vehicle Marketplace Mini Bid System. And whereas the village received a total of five bids and therefore. It is hereby resolved that the village awards the bid for the purchase of cab chassis and extended warranty. Uh, to Gabriel a truck, uh, for a Kentworth Model T three seventy at a cost of one hundred and eight. Thousand five hundred twenty four dollars and thirty thirty one cent. Plus, uh, any incidental fees, delivery title, register, et cetera. The cost of mounting the compacter. Uh, body to new chassis is not included. And it is hereby further resolved that the village will pay this amount in full through the fiscal year twenty twenty one general fund. A roll call vote.
Trustee Bender?
Hi.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Hi.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Hi. Resolution unanimously. So that'd be nice to move that forward. Good to have a backup. Uh, next we have a resolution, uh, zero two twenty twenty one, authorizing, uh, reduction in fire inspection fee. Uh, for twenty twenty one. I will make a motion to, uh. For the reduction, to authorize the reduction of the fire inspection fee.
Second.
Uh, whereas the builder Cold Spring is responsible for enforcing the Uniform Building Code. And whereas the village as part of the Uniform Building Code is responsible for conducting fire safety. And inspections every thirty six months for multiple family, commercial and mixed use buildings. And whereas the village fee sets the cost of triannual fire inspection at seventy five dollars and fifty dollars. Uh, if a reinspection is required. And whereas the village recognizes that COVID nineteen pandemic has created financial uncertainty. And hardship to some property owners, therefore. It is hereby resolved that the village reduced the fee for the triannual fire inspection from. To fifty dollars and that. Here will, and that there will be no charge in the fifty dollar reinspection.
No change.
No change.
What is that? Sorry.
No change.
Into fifty dollars.
Oh, and that there will be no change. Sorry. Um, and the fifty dollar inspection, reinspection fee. Further resolved that this fee reduction is only in effect for the calendar year twenty twenty one. Roll call.
A trustee Bender?
Hi.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Hi.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Uh, hi. Resolution officially adopted unanimously. Thank you. Um, next, as I brought up with Bugsy, you're. Resignation of Donald Pavlock, uh. It's, uh, I, Donald Pavlock, I'm putting my two weeks, uh. Notice in my last day will be, uh, January twenty second, twenty one. So I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Donald Pavlock.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Basically, uh, the reason I I believe he took a job in in the Village of Fish Guild, they have a different, uh. Fee or not fee paying schedule. So I'm not sure exactly what's included, but. It was seven dollars more an hour from what I understand, a little research that, uh, I think Jeff or Michelle did. So. Uh, anyway, we can once again look at our, uh, fees we did last year and. I thought they were, they were getting closer, but not that far behind. So we'll have to look at things again, I guess. Not sure how we keep people. We need to have somebody stable.
Does this, the hiring of a position like this, this isn't a civil service job, right? A labor, a labor, laborer job. You don't have to go through that whole process? No, okay.
But we advertised, last time we advertised in both the journal and local papers, uh, we had like, how many, sixty? How many people did we have?
Got a lot. It was like seventy resumes.
Wow.
In the journal.
And and then Bugsy and I interviewed quite a few of them. Um, so there's a a wide range of different people and personalities that applied. Um, and some really with no qualifications, so.
I know, and people need work.
Bottom line is if you have way more qualifications than, you know, the amount that we start off at, which is sixteen dollars an hour. And then we have two dollars added to that if you have a C D L, uh, license. Um, so eighteen is kind of, kind of the top, you know, for our labors. But we might have to look at that again. We did quite a bit. We checked out like local, we'd state and county and town. And, uh, I thought we were in the, we were in the ballpark, but. Might need to review that again.
Right.
Yeah, I think Donald's going, he's not going to the village. He's going to town of Fishkill.
Oh, okay.
Separate departments.
All right, okay. Thanks. Okay, next is, uh, is the next minutes, I think. Is that right? Or are we at something else?
Police reform.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I gotta scroll back up. Um, okay. Okay, New York State, next is a discussion or update on the New York Police Reform and rein. Reinvention, uh, collaborative update, um. Both, uh, Officer in Charge Larry Burke, who is on, and Trustee Foley. And I, in a minimal, uh, capacity of, are working on the, uh. On this, uh, on this reform. So I'll, I'll hand it over to Kathleen and and Larry.
So, um, just for a, a very quick reminder that, uh, the executive order. Um, requires that all municipalities in New York State that have police forces. Um, perform a comprehensive review of current police force deployments, strategies, policy procedures, practices. Um, and the review is intended to, um, have as part of its, um, exploration, a review of racial bias or disproportionate policing of. Community colors or communities of color or other minority groups. Um, the, so the the timing of this, um. Actually created an opportunity for the village. Um, the village is, the last comprehensive update of police policies was in two thousand thirteen. Um, and the standing policies do, um, have things that have elements that the governor's order is asking us to look at. Um, code of conduct for officers, mission, mission statement, and should have the code of conduct is off. References on and off duty conduct, um, and policies related to use of force, which is one of the, the areas of concern. Um, and so this, uh. Idea that we should look at policies actually is is probably speeding up a process that the village needed to undertake anyway. The policies are. In paper format, um, and they are not automatically updated with, um, changes in federal and state law. Um, and so Larry, um, Officer in Charge Burke, um, recommended that the village, um, enter, um. A contract with a company called Lexipol, which provides web based services for. Updating, not only updating police policy, but also, um, providing add on packages that, um. Uh, provide procedural manuals based on the policies, which are automatically updated and then, very importantly, training. So if, when an officer comes on duty, um, if there has been a change in, um, a policy that impacts, um, practice and and procedure. The officer has to go through a, a training session, uh, read, read through the revisions and the, in the policy and the practice. I mean, then answer a question about the training that has been provided. So there is a, an electronic tracking system. As well to know that officers have, um, undertaken the training. And that's really important. When you have a force like ours, which is very small and part time. Um, as Larry mentioned earlier, sometimes people don't come on shift. Again, um, for a couple of weeks. And so, um, there is that opportunity for them to. Uh, there isn't always an opportunity for them to see Larry as the officer in charge, but there will be this, um, update as they come on shift. So we are on Thursday morning, um, Larry and I are meeting with the project manager and Lexipol, he and I have undergone, um, an initial training. Um, to sort of orient ourselves to the, to the program. And on Thursday, we're going to talk through sort of the timeline for onboarding. Um, new policies. And when one of the reasons, um. That we we want to. Have that meeting before we talk about, go too far into timeline about the reform project is that because the policies are. At this point, eight years old, um, if we're going to be using the public's time as part of a review process, we want to make sure that we're using it. Well, um, and not having you review policies that are outdated and will be updated by, um, the Lex, the shift to Lexipol. So the first question that we're going to work with on Thursday, we just, the contract was signed in December. Um, the contract began in December, and so this is our first meeting with with Lexipol. Um, so first thing we'll do is establish a timeline and see how we can line up the goals of the overall policy update. And then the specific goals of, um, executive order two oh three to see if we can prioritize certain elements of. The policy update so that we have those sections available first. If that makes sense. Um, we do have an April first deadline from the governor. Um, we are not the only small municipality going through what we are going through now, taking a hard look at at policies and realizing that lots of things. Um, need to be brought up to date. Um, so what's, what's critical for us to demonstrate by April first is that we've made a good faith effort and we can show, first of all. That our greatest effort is moving into this system of of automated updating and training. So that's a, that's a big show of progress. The next is the, the, the critical element of executive order two oh three, which is public engagement in a process of review. Um, and Larry and I have recently, um, we participated with the Town of Kent. We observed the Town of Kent's panel. Um, as they analyzed, um, a survey that they did in their own community that about two hundred and twenty respondents in the Town of Kent. Um, and I think that that's something that we can take and we can do as a first step, um, to sort of identify where we are as a community in terms of. Um, our relationship with our officers, um, how the public perceives officers, the, the, the elements that the public. Um, thinks is important for us to look at. Um, and that gives us a base set of data. So we will be able to show by April first. Move toward a, a more modern and updated policy. System as well as the beginnings of assessing the comfort, the, the, um, topics, identifying our areas of priority that we want to. We want to examine as a community together. So the deadline may come April first, but the work doesn't end April first. Larry, did, is there anything that you want to add to that?
No, that's from, from looking at, um, all the municipalities, uh. Like you said, looking at Kent and looking at, um, Carmel and and Brewster. And in conversations with the chiefs of those departments, uh, on what they're doing, they're pretty much following the same type of. Of, uh, program with the, the surveys and see what the community thinks of the police and how we're going to go forward. And, uh, that's going to be the main meat and potatoes, I think, of what the governor is looking for. To have the community have some say into the policies and what their feel of their, their individual forces are. Um, and what do they expect of the officers to to that point? Um, I've been gathering, uh, different policies. Or I'm going to be gathering just different policies from municipalities that that closely mimic ours or mirror ours, I should say, which is, um, Fishkill. Uh, Village of Fishkill, which is a small department. I believe they have two eighteen or nineteen guy, uh, guys and girls. Uh, that do all part time work, exactly what we do. Um, their policy should be close to what we have. We don't need to, uh, to mirror. Let's say the Putnam County Sheriff's policies, because that's probably a couple of hundred pages long if i- if it's that, uh, least amount. So there's definitely some homework we're going to be doing moving forward. Um, I think that the specific written police policy that we have from two thousand and thirteen is a great. Uh, basis to go off of. It needs to have a couple of changes in it and some updates, which we'll work on through Lexipol. Uh, and I think, you know, doing it that way, um, uh, moves us forward. Uh, again, I do not, I personally do not believe that we will be able to do that by the April one deadline. Due to the, uh, limitations of public comment, um, uh, in meetings, like. Having a meeting at the firehouse due to COVID or having a meeting in Village Hall due to COVID. Um, we will try our best, though, to, again, move forward on the things that we can do. Uh, whether it be surveys or or any type of other Zoom meetings or whatever, like, um, the other municipalities have been doing. Uh, but the written, uh, policy, the patrol guide, as I like to call it, because that's what they used to call it in the city. The rules and regulations of the department, uh, will take a lot, will, you know, that I think that'll be a little more further down the line.
It's a bummer that we're being asked to do this during COVID because it's not, you know, it's, it's, it is, it is hard for folks to to feel each other and and. And really, um, engage with each other thoroughly via via Zoom. But I was encouraged watching the Kent. Panel function the other day, um, by Zoom. It's not ideal, but. At least the conversations can happen. Um, so there is a mechanism to have to, to, to move forward. So, so we're going to be putting out a call, um, for volunteers, um, to help.
Before we go that far, I, well, I'd like. Before, before we go that far, I, well, be, I'd, I'd like to stop before we get to that point because. I, I think with, a- and because looking at the timeline and what you've set. Uh, I'd just like to, I, I need to make some comments before we move me forward this, one. Um, I don't see an incredible urgency to complete this or whatever, or I, I know we're gonna get it. What we need to do in time and I think we should do this right, I, the deadline set right now tomorrow, if we polished up. You know, a letter or whatever, we could, we could prove that we're moving forward on this, that's my feeling. I, I, I don't think that, I think by April first, twenty first, wherever, where, wherever we are in this. We will probably have satisfied what they are initially looking for, that we were moving forward. We're, we're gonna have participation by the community, um, we've engaged already with Lexipol and this is where we're at. And I think that's gonna satisfy them and then plus, they have to understand, just like everyone else does. That COVID, you know, is part of the picture and so. So it seems like there's an urgency or you feel there's an urgency, which I don't feel with, they're not gonna be able to do it. They're, they can't hold back anything because we don't, they don't.
Well, I think that there are, there's a, and it's not a question.
No urgency, I just need to, I just need to say, there is no urgency to get this done, the whole thing done by the twenty.
We're not going to get the whole thing.
Okay, and so then the next part is.
Think that we, I think that we can.
I was, I was kind of trying to, I was, if I could, I would follow with my thoughts.
Yep.
I, I, I don't think that we should be moving ahead with getting public comment and having public input. Until we actually, the board agrees on a policy and sees a policy or talks to Lexipol. To see that what they have to offer us and what we have to work off of, I'd like to have something to say, this is what we have. If, if the public is, is, looks at something that we have where we're addressing their concern. I think that would be better than them saying, well, we wanna have something about, uh, police restraint or we wanna have something about whatever. And if we say, okay, that's in the policy already, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I think we're like putting the cart.
So what I'm gonna ask, what I'm gonna.
Okay, I was just trying to finish up my thoughts, if I could.
Sorry, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm proposing though.
Okay, I think you're misunderstanding that I'm talking and I'd like to finish.
All right, go ahead.
My point is, yeah, well, from what you're proposing and tell me you're not, that it seems like you want to, uh, right now. Go out with a survey or get a committee together to put a survey out there to get input from the community before we have a policy.
I, but that, that's the point at which you're misunderstanding, I'm not saying. I am not saying that right now, we want public comment on a particular policy. What I am suggesting is that we follow the work plan. That is laid out in the governor's order and which we see being followed around us in municipalities that face. The same constraints to do the very baseline level assessment to say. How is it, how, how do folks perceive interactions with our officers, I sent you, I know it sent it late today. Um, because I'd forgotten to send it when I got it from the town of Kent, I, I sent to all of you. The kind of survey that the Kent, town of Kent used, both one survey for its officers and one survey. For its residents to ask questions about the experience with the police department and experience of the police department. That provided two data sets to say, okay, here's, here's where we are starting in terms of how we view our relationships. That is not the same as, this is specific feedback I am giving on a specific policy. Policy feedback is an element, but if you spend time with the work document that we were given. The, the, the sort of guiding document we were given back in August. That is one of the baseline things that we're supposed to establish is. Understanding. Would not, what, what, what the data is about arrests, et cetera, et cetera, but also. How, what are the perceptions in your community about your community's relationship with its policing? So, this is really not hard and it's not rocket science to set up a survey monkey. Similar to something done, we know it's done in Kent, Larry and I have both seen the text, it has been shared with all of you, but I would like. This is supposed to be a participatory process, I would like to bring together a group of people to say, how can we make this survey? Of perceptions of our department and, and our officers' experience, how can we customize this survey? Or something similar to it to work for Cold Spring and get that baseline data, because then you take forward. To, as a report to the governor, not only we have done this, this, um, very policy-based. Move with Lexipol, we, we have, we are onboarding new policies and we have done the thing. The primary thing that we were supposed to do, which is hear from the public.
Wasn't that, wasn't that concerning policy, is it the whole thing re- re, uh, ki- is, it says reinvention and.
Right, so.
And that's. And the report, I'm talking for fucking Christ's sake.
Dave, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you're keeping interrupting me.
You don't need to use the language, I'm sorry that.
Well, that's, that's too bad, then quit interrupting me.
I'm sorry that I interrupted you, but you may not, Dave, you may not use.
I will say it right now, that's the first time I have and I just keep trying to say something and every time you're interrupting me. And then I bring up, raise my voice and then I'm the bad person, I'm not interrupting you. I'm trying to make a point which you're not listening to at all and I just asked a question and you start going into whatever. And then we're gonna get into a twenty-minute dissertation on, on whatever, that's, that seems convoluted and it seems like we're complicating this more. My, my question is, and, and my concern is that we're moving a little too fast here, I, I believe this was. I thought that this was to look at our policies, to make sure there were policies in place that would prevent. Future problems like we see in larger cities, to actually take a look at our policies and make sure there's stuff in place. That will make our, our police department stronger, tha- if that's not the case, if this is a case of reaching out and finding out what's wrong with our police department. Then I'm misinterpreting what was wanted, if we wanna look at our policy. And if that's not the case, then let me know that it's not policy at all, that there's a two-track thing here. Because if we are gonna look at our policy and improving it, we should have a policy that we're really improving and at this point, we don't have a policy. We don't have a policy that's strong, we all know that, we all need, it needs works on, that's why I have Lexipol, it wants to update everything. And I'm suggesting we talk to Lexipol, we see how they can help us, we see if there's, if that, for, uh, for. Um, spending more money on, on whatever they have to offer, how we can limit maybe our participation in this and move this along further. Right now, we've used the bottom line or the minimum amount, which is three thousand something, maybe for five thousand dollars. They have a lot more to offer us and can move this ahead forward, if, if it's not about policy, then. I'm misinterpreting what the goal is there.
Very finished, I don't wanna interrupt.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, so you are slightly misinterpreting, policy is an element of the process, just for the benefit of the public. This is what's provided to you and to us as elected officials, this is the New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. Resources and Guide for Public Officials and Citizens, at the back of the book. Is a suggested work, work plan and I'm gonna read out to you the steps, which makes clearer. All of the elements of this project in addition to. Policy review, that is an element, phase.
Suggested, right, just to make it clear.
Understood, Dave.
Okay, just, just wanna know.
And so, but I think the.
Do we show that page?
Are, are you gonna interrupt me now?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, also I'll wait till you're ready, till you're ready for me to keep going.
Okay, go ahead.
So. Phase one is planning, steps are create an operations plan. Coordinate with neighboring localities, which is what Larry and I have been doing, Larry has been attending the county police panel, I have been listening. Larry and I both participated with the count of ten, Kent, town of Kent, convene key stakeholders. Identify local leaders who can work closely with you to facilitate conversations with key constituents, constituencies, assess where you are now. Gather information on how your police department currently operates, including data, policies, procedure, prior complaint history. Budget, contracts, equipments, et cetera, share this information with the public, this self-assessment. Focus the conversation on what you and your community want to change. Phase two, listening and learning, and this was, this was intended. If you were following this timeline after the, the book came out in August, this would have been the September, October range. Part, phase two, listening sessions, conduct listening sessions with the public. You may want to organize these sessions thematically or focus on meeting with individual stakeholders separately. Engage experts, this guidebook provides you with a starting point, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, request comments and information. All localities will release their draft plans for public comment. Before completing the process, however, you may want to collect public feedback. Early in your plan development, especially from people unable to or uncomfortable with joining public meetings. Consider posting questions or prompts, asking for written comments or suggestions and in the, the text that I sent you for Kent. Um, you can see how Kent handled that, draft, uh, phase three, draft a plan, identify areas of focus. And that's what I was talking about earlier, identify measurable goals, draft or form, reform and reinvention plan, keep the public engaged. Phase four, public comment and ratification, release your draft plan for public comment, educate the public. Revise the plan to incorporate your public comment, ratify the plan, certify with New York State. So, what I was talking about before we got excited about policy, what I was talking about was way back here. In the very first phase, assess where you are now, I was proposing the very first step that gets a survey. So that by April first, we can demonstrate that not only have we moved forward and I think it's really what Larry has accomplished with Lexipol. Was a lot of work for him and I'm thankful to him for doing that and I'm thankful to all of you for approving that contract, I think that's gonna do good things. And set us much further ahead and modernize the department. I would like us to be able to demonstrate as we have been asked to do, that we are beginning that process and that we have in fact. When you, the certification document is here that you have to send to New York State and we need to check boxes that say. Local government has performed comprehensive review, local government has. Consulted with stakeholders, including but not limited to, and then it lays them out, we can't check that box if we don't make some effort to say. We have in fact engaged the public, so we don't have to do that by April first. But I certainly think that the public's expecting us to and that it's doable. Via a simple mechanism to show that we've made a good faith effort, I'll let others talk.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in on this one, um, yeah, I, I, following the, the other municipalities also and we keep. Pointing to Kent and, and the rest of them, also just so the public knows, Kent and the Putnam County Sheriff. And Carmel and all of the police departments are all pretty much full-time police departments, they have part-time workers. So they have chiefs out there, they have staff that help them, we are a small municipality, so the, the Albany. Or the governor's office would see that because it was not just us, over the entire state, if you go all the way up north, there's small, tiny. Part-time police municipalities that are not gonna be able to catch to the April first deadline. Uh, I think after we meet with Lexipol on Thursday and we have the meeting and we have, we have our initial sit-down with our representative Alexipol. We'll have a better understanding on the policy that we're gonna look to, to, uh, update if we, if we're gonna use the existing two thousand and thirteen and just update it. If that's, if that, if we can do that, or again, if, if we can come up with, uh, uh, maybe a little bit more. Uh, it would cost us ma- maybe a little bit more in funds, maybe five, maybe six, whatever it is, I don't know. The money wise and that to have them take a, um, a bigger role in doing that, so it would be less time for us to do it. I mean, like I said, mo- most of us are doing this, it's, 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 it's a lot, a lot of work. Uh, and to have to be, just to be pushed on a small municipality like ours. Uh, and the government of, of the village, it, it's gonna be extremely hard, it's gonna be a lot of, uh, you know, hours doing it. And i- and it's gonna get frustrating, um, totally understandable.
But it's not. I just wanna jump in for a minute, if I can, Kathleen, um, well, first of all, just to thank you and Officer Burke for the work that you've put in already. Um, you know, I think it's, it's really valuable to be moving forward, I also just wanna offer the perspective. Um, that we are doing this for our village to make a better relationship with our community and a better relationship with our police department. So whether or not we check all the boxes off by April, um, you know, the, the idea is to do good work and I, I think engaging with the community. At the earliest point we can to gather feedback is a really valuable part of that process. Whether or not it's, uh, specifically on policy, I mean, that is why the governor, uh. Made this directive in the first place is to improve these relationships, as a small village, we have the opportunity to do that and I think it's important to stay focused. On that idea and not just, um, you know, we have to do this because the governor said so. Yes, that's true, but also as a village, it's, it's an opportunity for us to really become more of a close-knit community as well.
The, so I'd like to just make myself clear, one, I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, I think it's very valuable and I've expressed this to Larry and I think I've expressed it to Kathleen, so. Just to be clear on my, my, where I stand on this, I think it's very valuable that we undergo this. Um, when I bring up the governor and what's anticipated and when it's anticipated and having this timeline, timeline. It's like, what I'm saying is that there, if we, I, I don't think there isn't. I, I don't think that there is a deadline where we're gonna be penalized or where there's, you know. There's gonna be harsh, um, you know, a pushback or whatever on us if we don't have it done, I just think that. What I'm saying is we, we have a lot on our plate, um, as Kathleen mentioned in, in one of her prior emails. I think that we should take our time on this and I think that I feel that we should have a policy in place. Uh, at least a draft policy updated by Lexipol before we move forward. I also wanna make it very clear that I totally want and I'm not against public, uh, input on this and I know the importance of that and. You know, I, there's, there's nothing that I've said that, um, I think would say that I don't want public input, I think that. That the time for public input would be after we had a policy going, um, you disagree with that and that's fine. Uh, I think we need to, to do the first step and have something to work off of and I think a lot of this is policy. And, and then when you have a policy, you can build off of that and then have public input, I just think that. Where we are and when we're putting this, I disagree with, I think we should have a policy in place, I think we should work with Lexipol to have that policy in place. So that we know if the, if there's, uh, concerns or issues that the residents have that we can point to where we've made those changes. And where we can go from there.
Can I just, can I just jump in for a second, um, part of what you started to say, Kathleen, you were talking about getting volunteers. Uh, and I understand that we want the largest possible, um, percentage of residents. Um, responding to our questionnaires, but in terms of getting a panel of volunteers, I think Larry, when you started speaking about this. You had in your mind pretty clear what segments of the population you need to get, you need to get religious leaders, you need to get people of color, you need to get LGBT.
In the order.
Age, you need to be, um. Young people, old people, so on and so forth, I think it's important that we do a little bit of that cuz if we open up and say, you know, we want people to volunteer. We may get an off, uh, an overabundance of one side or the other side of this, where I think it's very important that we get the wide. Um, you know, look at everybody that we need to get in this village, it's a small village, we know pretty much what the, where the dividers are or where they. The different groups are and I think it's important that every group somehow along the way is representative, when it comes to the survey, it's important that everybody. Answers, that's the biggest part of it, uh, we need to work very hard to get the biggest percentage of people answering the survey. Uh, but as you say in your breakdown here, anybody that we ask to volunteer on this panel is gonna understand that the amount of work that they have to put into this. Uh, but I think we need to be very careful that our panel involves a good cross-section of everybody in this village.
Absolutely, and I think there, there, you know, there are folks who have already expressed interest, um. I think it's really important that we make sure that we have, uh, not only a cross-section of people, you know, sort of demographically. But also ways of thinking, um, that's, that's really important.
The, the thing, the thing about it is, um, again, uh, I talked to, I've recently found out there's a few municipalities in New York State that aren't even doing this. They're pretty much told, I'm not saying that we do that, but I'm just letting you know, they're not gonna be penalized, we're not gonna be penalized if, if we're not gonna be done by April first. And I don't wanna keep reiterating that we, we're pushing this past, uh, April first. But again, i- i- it's a tremendous amount of work that, that we all need to, that we're all gonna have to look at, we have to gather information, have to go over the, the policy and. And what they did in the sheriff's office is they put out, uh, they, they changed their policy. And then they put out, uh, sections of the policy online, so people wanted to go look at it, they can research it, so they actually set their policy up first. I'm actually getting a draft of that policy that's gonna be sent out, uh, in two weeks online, I, I should have that in my hands in the next couple of days. They've been great and trying to help me out to get through this with limi- limited, um, you know, uh, people and limited, limits. Uh, like again, uh, just not having a staff, I mean, that's one thing and it puts a lot of pressure on everybody else, but. I am in agreement with, with Dave on, on definitely getting a policy together, um, and doing the best we can with that and whenever it get, we get it done. You know, I, I, and I've said this from day one, I don't. I, I, and I've said this from day one, I don't believe it's going to happen by April 1st, but that's not the end of the world. We're going to get it together. We're going to get it right. We're going to get it correct. So it's done the first time. And then we can do changes, as, as you said, Kathleen, you said it's, Lexi Paul's, it's a live thing. We can do our own changes on it. We're going to get the governor to come down. They're going to automatically put the new laws in that come through, so we don't have to worry about it. So once that's set there, we're good. Um, and then with that, we, if we put out a survey and we get everybody's opinions on a survey, if they want to go online, as in Kent, remember what they said? They got, they got like 10 responses in a three-week period, and all of a sudden 200 and.
220, right.
Right around the holiday. So these are things that we can work going forward. But I mean, this, that, that April 1st deadline, I would not be too concerned with it.
I, I am not concerned with it in, in thinking that we have to have this entire project done by April 1st. I think we've been asked to make a good faith effort, and I think we can do that. I, I, I guess, I mean, that, that's why I was proposing that we, when we meet with Lexi Paul on Thursday, that we prioritize areas of policy concern that overlap with this, so that we can be efficient in our use of time. But I don't, I do think it's, as Heidi said, it's important not to lose sight of the, the primary focus of this directive, which was public engagement. And we do not need to, I, I don't think that we'll, we'll have all of the discussions that we need to have April 1st, but I think that we can make an effort to at least gather information by a survey. I'm not sure what the resistance is, why there is such resistance to a base, I guess, my suggestion is we pause the conversation and all of you look at the kinds of questions that were asked in the town of Kent. And I think Larry, it's important to note that the, I mean, the county is basically checking boxes, but the county has done a number of, put together a number of committees that look at top, that looked at topic areas, including LGBTQIA, um, BIPOC, uh, and, uh, they put together a committee looking at immigrant issues. They went very quickly and had very little actual public participation, but the effort was made. I think that we have, and we have a community of smart people here who I think we can make an effort and put together a survey and have at least a, a, a section of data point to start from. And actually include people in the beginning stages of this in a way that helps us to, to have a data set. I, I don't.
I'm not resisting you on that. I did, I did I say that?
You're not. No, you're not, Larry.
Let's, let's get, let's look at Lexi Paul on Thursday. Let's have our, our, our questions answered on going forward on the policy. And then we can make, we can actually move forward with that. At least we have that solid piece right there, what they're going to offer us, and we can go from there.
Dave, are we good?
Good with what?
That we're having the meeting on Thursday.
Yeah. And I think that should be the starting point. I think this was premature. That was, that's, that's how I feel. And I think engagement earlier on, before we actually talk to Lexi Paul, see what we can get together. I think it's, I think that's, that's premature. I just think that we should have a policy in place. You don't, I do. So it's not resistance. It's a difference of opinion on how we should move forward.
Yeah, well, um, a difference of opinion, but also I guess it's a feeling, a feeling as if I hope that we can have a can-do attitude for something that we've.
What, what do you want me to do? Put pom-poms on and jump up in the air and down for it?
No, but that would be exciting.
I don't know what you actually want for, from me. I, I just, I, I'm for this. I want to move it ahead, and I want to move it ahead in a different way than you want to move it ahead.
So I guess, I'm sorry, Heidi.
That doesn't mean that I'm not for it. It's not, it doesn't mean I don't want public engagement. It doesn't really mean that I believe there should be reform or that we should be reviewing it, that the whole country should be. It doesn't really mean that I'm racially biased. It doesn't mean anything. It's, what it means is that I would like to take our time on this. There is no rush needed. There is a deadline that was set, which I think we could already satisfy what they need for it. And with COVID happening, you know, in a very responsible way, if we did absolutely nothing now, which we're not going to do, and I'm not suggesting we do, I'm just suggesting that there really, a deadline should really kind of not be an issue at this point. I think that we could satisfy it right now. I just think moving ahead, I, I feel like a policy should be in place or that work should be done, you know, or talk to Lexi Paul and see what's really involved in that. And before we move forward with public, you know, public engagement, you have a difference of opinion.
We do have, yeah, that's fun. That's fine. I would, I would ask that you do have a look at, have a look at what we sent you from Kent to have a sense of the tool, the tools that it could provide for our kit.
I, I, well, first of all, you're suggesting that I haven't looked at it, which I have. Also, you're suggesting, it seems, well, you said you should take a look at it. That means you would, that I haven't looked at it, um, which I have. And I've also looked through the book, which you showed the public, you know, when they sent it, probably, I don't know, at the beginning of this. So I went through all of that too, and have probably forgotten 90% of it. But, um, my, my understanding and your understanding are a little bit different too. Um, I think this was to actually make sure policies were in place that actually were working with the community and that were actually, you know, strengthening the police's role in, in our community. And I think that the first part of that is to actually have a policy to prevent some of what we saw and they, which started, you know, started, or was the reason for this whole, you know, the need for this, uh, policy, policy reform from the governor. So.
Okay.
All right. Thursday's two days away. We don't have to wait too, too long.
What's that?
I said Thursday's only two days away. We can get started right then and there with Lexi Paul.
Right.
And move from there.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
I'm, I'm going to interject at this point. Uh, we have, uh, we've been engaged now for almost three hours in various meetings. We have a couple more topics on the agenda. This particular topic has been going on for 45 minutes. Can we declare it that the discussion is ended for this meeting and will be resumed at another meeting?
Before we do that, actually, it's important to me, Dave, that you acknowledge the way that you spoke to Kathleen and to the rest of the board and to the public. You know, you're the mayor. We look to you for a code of conduct, and, you know, to me, that was not becoming of a mayor.
Okay. Well, duly noted. I'm not, I'm not apologizing or anything at this point, quite honestly.
Okay. Well, that's noted then.
So to Marie's point, can we, uh, can we move on here?
I would like to.
The next is approval of bills.
Heidi, this one's yours. Do you want me to do it?
I can do it. Uh, I'm going to look at the right page here.
Okay. So I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bill's batch number 5852 in the amount of $101,319.46.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay.
Next, we have approval of minutes, uh, December 15, 2020. I'll make a motion to, uh, accept, approve. And discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for making edits, Jeff.
You're welcome. Finally, December 29, 2020, uh, Village Board Trustees Meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I think finally, if there's anything else from the board, there's public comment.
Uh, no one is asking to speak.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Aye.
Good night.